20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We are in the City Commission chambers. This is a regular City Commission meeting of the Orman Beach City Commission, and we will call the meeting to order. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in this evening by Assistant Finance Director Chris Bile and our Planning Director Stephen Spraker. They served as our greeters tonight. If you have any cards, want to speak during audience comments, now's the time to get those to the clerk, to my right, your left, and make sure you get those in. I want to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you, to my right, your left, Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart, Assistant City Clerk Wendy Hauntz, Commissioner from Zone 1 Dwight Selby, Commissioner from Zone 2 Troy Kent, to my left and your right, our Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis, Zone 4 Commissioner Rob Littleton, our City Manager Joyce Shanahan, our City Attorney Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would please silence your cellphones, I mean really silence them. I say that every time, and a cellphone goes off every time, but pull out your cellphone, take a look at it, turn it off, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that nothing goes off later on tonight, because the rule is you have to buy pizza for everybody that's left when that happens. And if you would, please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health will be giving the invocation this evening.
Almighty God, we gather here today to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. And we ask your blessing and guidance on our city leaders as they make these decisions in behalf of our community. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. millage rate, and I'll ask our City Clerk to read the Resolution 2021-102 by title, please.
Resolution number 2021-102, a resolution adopting proposed millage rates for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, establishing the date, time, and place for the first public hearing on the proposed millage rates and the tentative budget, directing communication, expressing legislative intent, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution number 2021-102, read by title only.
Thank you. Per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the tentative millage rate for the City of Orman Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget is 3.9128 mils. This rate is 4.7% above the rollback rate of 3.7370 mils. The tentative debt service millage rates are 0.0290 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0890 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the tentative millage rate? And I'll ask the City Clerk if we've received any comment cards or have a person's registered to speak on this item. At this time, I'll entertain a motion and second to adopt the tentative millage rate.
I move approval of Resolution number 2021-102.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded, the tentative operating millage of 3.9128 mils is 4.7% above the rollback millage rate. The resolution also includes adoption of the tentative debt service millage rates at 0.0290 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0890 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
No.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. The tentative operating millage rate is set at 3.9128 mils, which is 4.7% above the rollback millage rate of 3.7370 mils. This time, we'll move to audience remarks. We'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting. The City Commission has adopted the rules and policies regarding the three-minute time limit for each speaker. If you've filled out a card, you can speak for those three minutes. You can wave in support of something or wave in opposition to something. You are not allowed to transfer your three minutes to somebody else to allow them additional time. Those are the rules that this commission has agreed on, and we enforce the three minutes in a strict manner in order to be fair to everyone. Audience comments will conclude generally in approximately 30 minutes, and if we have more cards than we have time, occasionally we will extend that a little bit. Otherwise, we'll finish up the rest of the cards at the end of the meeting. So tonight, we start with Jerry Valsick, followed by Amy Valsick.
Again, I'm Jerry Valsick. I've lived in our Orman Beach paradise for over two decades, almost two decades. I'm here to say that you commissioners have failed us, each one of you. You failed to allow sufficient input from we, the people, before you voted automatically or autocratically to demolish the Union Church. Your action is stunningly undemocratic and unacceptable. As our elected officials, we expect each of you to listen to us and to represent us well. You have not, period. Let's look at the backstory. Over three years ago, when the city bought the church, you, quote, "determined that a public purpose exists for the acquisition of the property, including various public uses and activities such as a community center and recreational leisure and community activities," unquote. Then, approximately two years later, during the January 7, 2020 workshop, the predisposition was to demolish the church, but the statement was made, quote, "public participation will be part of the decision-making process." This past May 4, some 16 months later, you voted autocratically to demolish the church. You did not seek public input, as was promised, before making your decision. Why? In the special meeting I held last week, three of you, Commissioners Kent, Persis, and Littleton, continued your adamant stance, in spite of the significant public outpouring of concern, to delay the demolition for at least six months to allow for public input to determine the best use of the church property. How utterly defiant and arrogant on your part. Many residents question your motives in this decision, and note that the four of you re-elected two years ago received more than $62,000 in campaign donations from developer, construction, and real estate interests. So the question is, do such donations influence you to the extent of detracting from your responsibility to represent our interests in the best possible way? Another point, the profound letter each of you received from the historic, the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation, a letter of support for finding a preservation solution for our historic church, as reflected in the trust's mission statement, quote, "to promote the preservation and inclusive sharing of a diverse historical and architectural heritage of Florida." Don't you believe in restoring and preserving this historic property for future generations? And yet another point, I distinctly remember Commissioner Kent opposing the renovation of the McDonald House, saying it costs too much. He changed his mind, he said, once while walking in front of the house with his son. In effect, this house is important because it is part of our history. Isn't this property also a part of our Orman Beach history? Another person will finish my presentation.
Amy Valsick, followed by Dr. Frank Deefen-Durfer.
Amy Valsick, also a resident of Orman Beach. The questions I raised previously remain. One, is it really best to demolish the church and convert it into a parking lot at the expense of sacrificing one of the notable links to our history? Two, has a formal study, not an inventory, but a study, been done on the need for additional parking? Three, why haven't we heard from the city's Quality of Life Board on this issue so important to so many residents? Commissioner Littleton, after last week's commission meeting and your comments there, I emailed you to say you haven't done your homework. Since the city owns the church property, it's the city's responsibility to research options, develop a plan, and figure out how to fund it. It's not the citizens' responsibility. You should have consulted with city staff to refresh your memory on the positive McDonald House renovation experience, in which funding venues were addressed and citizen input was solicited and gathered. My email cited potential funding possibilities, such as echo grants and the millions in stimulus funding that Commissioner Selby previously raised. My email also contained a plan to address the Union Church issue if a demolition pause was granted, which could be patterned on the successful renovation of the McDonald House. Elements of that plan are, one, the city would engage a consultant like Bender &amp; Associates to explore options for use of the property, including demolition if warranted. Two, a citizens' group could be established by civil discourse, common ground, including representatives of our local business community. Three, the consultant would solicit input from this group and other citizens via appropriate venues such as town hall meetings. And four, the consultant would produce a report with recommended options, which the city would then review, share with residents, and survey us for the best option to pursue. In short, you need not have conditioned your potential vote to delay by demanding funding and repurposing ideas from us. So what happens next after demolition? A temporary parking lot? A future community center? The commission divesting itself of the property on the west side of North Beach Street by selling it to a developer, an investor, or an LLC? Will you retain the east side next to the waterway for use as a parking lot as well? Time will tell just what you had in mind when you bought this property. You're all now in a precarious political situation. As Mayor Partington said last week at the commission meeting, quote, "It's dangerous not to listen to our residents," end quote. Rest assured, we will not forget the commission's stunning and arrogant dismissal of our voices on this issue. Thank you for your consideration.
Dr. Deefen-Durfer, followed by Travis Sargent. I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Dr.
Yeah, Frank Deefen-Durfer, 80 North Beach Street. I want to again comment on the church, and thanks for letting me speak. I've heard every option, I think, that's out there. I've seen every email that's passed around, pros and cons, some good, some not so good. I'm going to throw out another proposal. One is, I'll purchase the property. Two, not the riverfront parcel, because I think that should remain with the citizens. You can only have so much beachfront property, and you should not give that up. So this would be for the church itself. And I've already signed the contract. I believe you have a copy of that, and I have a deposit check for $50,000 to start the process on it. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Say the last line again. I couldn't hear you.
I said if there was any questions, I'd be glad to take these questions this time.
Thank you. That's it. I don't think there's any questions at this time.
Is there another option for you?
There may be later down the road. I don't think it's, Randy, honestly, I don't think it's an option even if we wanted to. There's a process that we have to go through, and we can talk about this at the end of the meeting. I don't really want to get into it right now.
Correct. The short answer is no, you cannot accept the proposal this evening. Thank you.
I didn't hear what he said.
He said the short answer is no, we can't accept the proposal this evening. We'd have to open it up for proposals.
That's fine. Okay. It's on the table.
Understood. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate that. Travis Sargent, followed by Kathy Licklider.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. First, I would like to thank the three of you. The item to demolish 56 North Beach Street came before you. You all reviewed the information provided, visited the site, and made an educated vote to demolish the structure. For that, I thank you. I understand the property at 56 North Beach Street is historic, not the building. John D. Rockefeller died in 1936. This building was constructed in the 60s. Nowhere in the Orman Beach Historic Society webpage does it even reference this location. The population of Orman Beach is roughly 42,000. The petition to give a six-month pause was signed by roughly 200 residents, far from the masses. During the special meeting, I heard comments like, "Remember, decisions have consequences with the voters." That is true. In 2018, a local group asked for a moratorium, six-month pause on construction. It was not granted, yet all of y'all were re-elected. Lastly, flipping your vote is not being a hero. What the men and women in uniform is heroic. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Kathy Licklider, followed by Nancy Loman.
Kathy Licklider, 624 North Halifax Drive. I would like to read a letter from the Florida Trust of Historic Preservation. Dear Miss Licklider, on behalf of Florida Trust, I want to thank you for your commitment to Florida's historic resources and for taking the time to nominate a property that is important to you for the 2021 Florida 11 to Save. We are grateful for people like you working to protect the special places that make Florida extraordinary. As you know, the Florida 11 to Save is an annual listing of the most endangered historic places in the state. As nominated by the people of Florida, this list serves as a guide for the Florida Trust advocacy and education initiatives for the year. This year, we received a very high volume of nominees, and we're happy to share with you that the location you nominated made the list. The 2021 Florida 11 to Save will be announced at the Preservation on Main Street Conference in Newport Ritchie at the opening session July 21 at 9:00 AM and available on Facebook. On July 21, we will issue a statewide press release announcing the 11 to Save locations. We ask that you do not share publicly your location has been placed on the list until after that time. Once the press release has gone out, please feel free to share the news with the listing of your local media and let us know if we can help. After the conference, we will reach back out with you to share Florida Trust ambassador that will work with you to learn more about your location. The goal of that communication is to gain a deeper understanding of the unique history and challenges surrounding the property. We hope to work with you to identify ways the Florida Trust could help the property. As a reminder, being listed on the 11 to Save is a good thing. It means people in your community care about the historic place and are seeking support to save it. Our goal is to work with the property owners and community to save these historic resources and share the unique stories only your community can tell. Thank you again for taking the time to nominate this property and the 11 to Save. Sincerely, Melissa Wiley, CEO and President. The Florida Trust for Historic Preservation feels that the church is worth saving, and so does the community of Orman Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Nancy Loman, followed by Gigi Galloway.
Good evening, Nancy Loman. This is a tough one. I'm speaking about the church, too. I think the reason it's the toughest is because I'm the same age as the church, so I didn't realize I'm historic. But I just wanted to share with you that a few years ago, we worked on a master plan, and I was so thankful to have been chosen. I'm not, I think, Troy, maybe it was you that allowed me to serve on the master plan because I represented the Orman Memorial Art Museum and Gardens. And boy, everybody in that room was clamoring for density of choice, more restaurants, more walkability, more parking. They want this art district to really thrive. The businesses want it, we want it, and with the gridlock that's on Granada, I mean, that's another tough one you guys have in front of you down the road. I mean, everyone talks about the gridlock on Granada daily. And so the walkability is important to us. We want to park and then walk around downtown Orman Beach. And what a lovely master plan that was. And so I get that for a lot of you, that was the reason why you want to, why you bought the church, it's the reason why you want to demolish it, because you're thinking, maybe there could be a community center, maybe we could get more people to support our businesses. And so I applaud you for that, because it takes some real vision to think about what we want five and 10 years from now. And I'm all for preserving the right kinds of things in our history, but it takes money. And so I just want to, you know, mention that for people who are passionate about history, put your money in the Anderson Price Building, put your money in the McDonald House. I mean, we have staggered along on the McDonald House for years. And so, you know, think about what you want and then put those efforts into that. You know, the veranda has sat empty for two years. You know, Lowell and I looked at buying that, but it takes another half a million dollars or more to make that a viable property. And I don't hear anyone speaking about that right now, but, you know, we need to be thinking about the master plan of Orman Beach, though if that's on people's radar in this room, we need to act now. But I just, you know, I know it's a tough decision. I do, I know it's tough, but I just remember being in that master plan arena with so many of the people in our community. And we have one area that we can make our downtown, on this side of the bridge and that side of the bridge, just those, these beautiful charming little areas that need all the support they could get from you. Thank you.
Gigi Galloway, followed by Kathy Crati.
Being actively involved in the community and state for nearly 38 years in the field of commercial real estate, I always ask myself, why do people buy a commercial property? Why are some properties so within hours on the market and others take several years? The church membership role had been declined for years, and it was known within our own profession that the church could be purchased by anybody. With this in mind, why did no one step forward over the last three to four years to purchase the property other than the city? It was a fantastic purchase to the city when one looks at land value only. Inheriting existing problems known and not known involving old buildings create money pits when it comes to renovations. I know from experience. The older they are, the more cost and surprises one has when you open up a wall. Zoning and building codes can bring any commercial remodel to screeching halt. ADA bathroom requirements, stairwells, elevators, installing a new fire sprinkling system can blow up a remodel budget very quickly. The replacement of 25 tons of HVAC induct work is not cheap in today's market. Mold and asbestos removal and remediation is not cheap. Who wants to be in the building like today in the heat of the summer with poor ventilation, no OEC? A leaking roof means replacing a roof decking and new shingles, which is at the highest price point we've ever seen. After attending the special meeting on this subject last Tuesday, listening to 25 people, I wonder how no one, zero, thought the church was worth saving using their own dollars or their own bank account. I heard a lot of groups wanting to use it and had fantastic ideas, but I heard crickets when it came to a proposal on all the needed renovations, how much was it going to pay for it, and by whom. No one offered to even go to the bank and put their name on a mortgage. In listening to all the very passionate feeling about wanting to save the church, not one person brought their checkbook to the podium or presented a plan to pay for the cost of complete renovation for saving the church. Having restored two old homes in the last 50 years, I truly understand the meaning of the money pit. We all are challenged daily with emotional decisions that tear at your heart as well as your business decisions. This must be made by budget restraint. In the case of the church, your decision may or may not be popular of those in attendance, but when one looks at the cost versus reward analysis, as a businessman who truly understands the cost of commercial renovation, the city of Orman Beach should not spend $1 on the renovation of church due to the unknown inherited renovations required from years of neglect. This church is truly a money pit. The church is a private sector renovation project. Let the private sector step to the plate and use their own dollars should anyone come forward on the 12th hour to save the church. It's time that the government stops being the bank for everybody's special interest projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Crati, followed by Connie Colby.
Thank you. As I said, I'm Kathy Crati, and I am a resident of Orman Beach. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the removal of the church building. Although I do recognize there's great joy in saving the properties in the community, and there are some that I have been very involved with over the years, this particular building doesn't have a use. The city bought it three years ago, 2018. It needed renovations, and when I went back and looked at some of the older articles, The Orman Beach Observer said even then it needed $2.8 million to put it to use because of the lack of air conditioning and the mold problems. It has sat vacant, and even at that time, you guys voted four to one not to lease it to anybody because it was too dangerous for use, and Mr. Hayes said we didn't want to get sued. I agree with that wholeheartedly. So now we're in 2021, three years later, no air conditioning, the mold can only have gotten worse. We all know, we all live here, we know what type of problem that is. But in addition, and I do estate planning, so I get to deal with old houses a lot, and when they're empty, you get this lovely problem called rodents. And that building has got to have more rodents in it than St. Patrick himself could get out of it at this point. So with all those things in mind, the building is just simply not fit for human use. We can't repurpose everything. I just sort of, as a side note, I talk to people all the time who's like, oh my God, my mother saved everything. What am I going to do with these 27 old soccer jerseys? You're not going to make a quilt because you aren't really very good at soccer, your mom couldn't sew, and it's too hot in Florida. Similar, the building has no uses, it's too old, and the material's not any good for use here in the state of Florida. So thank you for your decision not to waste the money to repurpose the building. I think it's a good one, and I support that. Thank you.
Connie Colby, followed by Susan Bayfield.
I'm not going to go over everything that I wanted to say, but this morning I sent all of you an email regarding the multiple times that I heard or read that public would be involved in this decision-making, well, in the conversation anyway, regarding the church. And I think last weekend was probably the first time we actually got to talk. So instead of talking about the decision that you've already made, which I really don't agree with, but I would like to ask that in the future, when things are coming up, that we have a little bit more warning or information ahead of time, because I know in the background right now, you're talking about things like Avalon Park, the Hand Avenue Extension, the library, the police department. I heard Mr. Littleton at one point about the Regal Theater possibly. And instead of waiting until we haven't had a chance to talk about it, please include us in the discussion ahead of time. Thank you.
Susan Bayfield, followed by Linda Williams.
That's Barfield, and good evening. Thank you for your service. Like so many, I would like to, if I can ask, if it's a question that you can answer, why? Why did you buy a building without a plan? I understand from a commissioner, there was no plan. There has been no plan. There has been no protection of the problems that were immediately pointed out. So why? And then why? You've already had one company, one agency come up with an honor to the building. You have, you have people who are very concerned, who have already started raising money. And to, and I guess what I would ask is, why? Would you please wait a moment? You've already done the remediation, it's done, so we're not going to die. You've already done the remediation, it's done, so we're not going to die, any of us from any of that, we're not going to be sick. Thank you for the remediation. I would just ask that, that you consider just giving it a moment, give it a breath to allow those citizens that would have come forward had it not been for COVID, had it not been, I myself, as a resident, I, when I heard that you purchased, I thought, what the heck? What are they going to do? I waited. What I got from a commissioner recently is, nobody came forward with anything. Well, gosh, y'all, I thought it was your job. You bought it, you must have had a plan, but you didn't. So, I would ask, please, just give us time to see what we can put together. There are so many grants that are available, matching grants, and people willing to put up money. So, just give us one chance. You, you won't need to pay it. That's not what this is about. This is about saving the building, saving the property. And if people need parking, maybe those merchants downtown need to come together and, and purchase some land for parking. We'll all pay for it, and thank you for your time.
Linda Williams, followed by Kathy Wharton.
Good evening, Linda Williams, 131 Bezorbi, and moderator for Common Ground. Bill Denny and I are here because we wish to have you come to Common Ground and work with us. I'd like to read something that I wrote regarding what we're about. "A Plan for All: From the Tiniest Creatures to the Biggest Developers, For the Poor and the Wealthy Alike, For the Old Oaks Whose DNA Shares, Shares 80% of Our DNA, To the Imported Palms, For the Shopkeepers and Mallwalkers, The Athletes..." Can't read it. "...for the Racecar Drivers, The Power Walkers, The Saunters, The Cyclists, For the Farmers and Fishermen, To the Business Owners Large and Small, From the Green Smooth Lawns To the Wild Native Habitats, Butterflies and Bees. No One Should Be Left Out. Why Are We Sitting Around Arguing and Blaming? The Power of Interaction Is the Power of Our Connectedness And the Source of Creative Solutions. Solutions That Are Born Out of Merely Talking and Listening, Out of Interaction. The Other Option Is To Continue On A Predictable Path, That Of The Incessant Power Struggles And Of Diminishing One Another. The Dance of Life Is The Push and Pull Of Opposites In Order To Create Balance And In Nature Homoeostasis. Civil Discourse Is Only Asking For A Hearing, For A Conversation Between Us, And I Can Guarantee You The Process Of Synergy Will Bring A Win-Win For All. We Don't Have To Argue With Each Other About This. You Said To Bring An Offer? Rob, you said to bring an offer? Somebody bought one tonight. That Doesn't Mean The City Can Do Anything About It, But You Said If Somebody Did, You Would Change Your Vote, And We're Expecting That. We're expecting you to give us more time now that there's an offer. We Have Plenty Of Ways To Pay For This, It Does Not Have To Come From The City. Plenty Of Grants. This, this property has just won an Award. So, Let's All Give It An Opportunity To See What We Could Do To Have A Win-Win, Not, I mean, what we're doing tonight, everybody has a right. We Can Disagree, You And I, About What, Everybody In Here Can Disagree About It, But With The Process Of Synergy, We Can Find Something That Everybody Will Love, Including A Parking Plan For All. I mean, think about it, you can have a little, I don't know, anyway, something to run people back and forth across the street.
Thank you, Linda. Kathy Wharton, followed by Jim Schultz.
Good evening, everyone. I, I'm holding here in my hand a copy of a letter that was sent from the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation. The, it's by Melissa Wiley, CEO and President of the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation. And I have to change glasses, I'm sorry. This is a letter, and some of you, probably a lot of people here are aware of it, certainly each one of the commissioners and Mr. Mayor, you also received a, a copy of this letter. So, I'm going to read as much of it as I can during the time I have. It says, "Dear Mayor Partington, Vice Mayor Persis, and Commissioner Selby Kent and Littleton, I Write You Today To Ask You To Consider The Future Of The Mid-Century Modern Church At 56 North Beach Street. For Over 100 Years, This Site Has Been A Place Of Reflection, And We Respectfully Request That The City Of Orman Beach Take A Moment To Reflect And Delay The Plans For Demolition To Allow Local Historical Organizations And Interested Parties The Opportunity To Provide Alternative Proposals For The Preservation Of The Orman Beach Union Church. I Can Assure You The Florida Trust For Historic Preservation Is Deeply Interested In Being A Part Of Finding A Preservation Solution For This Important Historic Place. The Mid-Century Modern Church At 56 North Beach Street Is An Important Piece Of Orman Beach And Florida's Architectural History. Mid-Century Modern Architecture Is A Movement From The 1940s Through The 70s Characterized By Its Clean Simplicity, Integration With Nature, And Often Featuring Open Floor Plans And Interior Places. This Church, Which Was Built In 1960, And Its Location Embodied The Mid-Century Modern Design." I'm going to fast forward, I've got a copy, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, that I would like to, to give to everyone. I'm going to skip down to, "We Acknowledge That The Code Recognizes January 1, 1950 As A Date Of Significance. We Respectfully Request That The City Consider The Guidelines Of The State Of Florida's Division Of Historical Resources And The Federal Government, Which Consider Structures 50 Years Of Age Or Older As Historic. Thank You For Your Time And Consideration And All You Do To Protect Florida's History And Heritage. Sincerely, Melissa Wiley, CEO And President Of The Florida Trust For Historic Preservation." And there's a lot more, and I do realize that, as stated here, that each one of you have received a copy of this. And I'm, I just, I'm going to be the reminder person, and if it's okay with you, may I distribute?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jim, bring us home.
Yeah, Jim Schultz, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Free speech is sometimes not always a pretty process. It's sort of like making sausage. Usually, you like the result, but getting there isn't always what you want. Actually, I'm going to sort of sidestep the issue of the church and talk about free speech, because I'm concerned about that right now. I think we're at risk of losing our ability to make our own decisions for medical decisions, whether it be fluoridation, which deprives you of that, or whether it be a COVID vaccine that's experimental. And the developer of it, what did he say about? He said that he has grave concerns because they've actually have some defects in this that make it unsuitable to be put in the public's arm. And that the biodistribution study that only Japan released from Pfizer, and nobody else has released, showed that it didn't perform the way it was designed to. It was supposed to stay in the deltoid and not present a risk to the whole body, but that the spike that was produced by this was actually toxic. And that one of the main, it went throughout the body, instead of just being resigned to that one spot and not affecting you through your whole body. And that one of the main locations it went to was ovaries. Gee, too bad. Very complex interaction, and we're talking about reproductive abilities over a lifetime being adversely affected by spike proteins that reproduce throughout the whole body because of the design that weren't supposed to go throughout the whole body. They were just designed to stay in that deltoid and maybe go to a lymph gland and produce a immune response. That's not what they do. So, what happened when Mr. Malone did this on a broadcast? He was deplac, wow, yeah. It was taken down because he wasn't worthy as a developer, and it was also removed from the internet that he ever developed it. If that doesn't scare the hell out of you, it should. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's websites. These are the minutes from the June 1, 2021 city commission meeting. Any additions, deletions, or corrections, commission?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, we'll show those passing unanimously. We are now on the consent agenda. The action proposed is stated for each item on the consent agenda. Unless the city commissioner removes an item from the consent agenda, there will be no discussion on individual items. Single motion will approve all items. Are there any items that any commissioner wishes to pull?
Item N, Mayor.
Anyone else? Seven N.
I approve approval of the consent agenda, agenda minus item N.
I second that motion.
Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Okay, I pulled item N. Oh, no. Where's his vote? Oh, I'm sorry. The answer is yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sully.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and now we go to seven N, and Commissioner Kent, you will be first on that, on that item. Do you want to read the title first, Wendy?
Resolution Number 2021-116. The Resolution Authorizing The Execution Of An Amendment And Renewal Of A School Resource Officer Agreement Between The City Of Orman Beach And The School Board Of Lusia County And Setting Fourth And Effective Date. This Is Resolution Number 2021-116, Read By Title Only.
Thank you, and Commissioner Kent.
Thank you. And I, I pulled this item to have a brief discussion about it. I will be voting in favor of this item this evening, but I just, I just wanted the commission to know, I wanted the audience to know where my thought process was on this. Chief Godfrey, correct me if I'm wrong, but we received a, a federal grant that helped pay for this for three years, and then we had to fund it for a year, which we have done. I think it has been two years after that, and we are still helping to fund this with the school board of Lusia County. I love that we are partners with the school board on, on different things here and there. But this is something that I'm, I'm going to be looking at really deeply for next year. I don't know if it is completely appropriate for us to be footing half of the bill for this continually, will this continue forever? The school board is their own taxing governmental agency, and, you know, I'd like to look and see what some other communities are doing with their partnership. It's, it's no surprise for everyone in here to know that our school resource officer that we have there is the best in the business. Is a school resource officer warranted at that school? Absolutely. My question is, should you, the taxpayers of Orman Beach, who you're paying Orman Beach taxes and you're paying school board taxes, should we be footing half of that bill, which comes to about a little under $21,000? Or should the school board just be, be footing that bill? Just, I think it opens up for a healthy conversation with the school district for next year, but I'll be voting in favor of it tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else wish to discuss? I just need a motion and a second.
Move approval?
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sully.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and now would be the appropriate time if any commissioner wishes to comment on any consent agenda items. Commissioner Sully.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to comment on item F. Item F is a resolution accepting the utilities for Verona, which is the new ICI development on the north peninsula in Orman by the Sea. There has been some, there was some communication in the past that that development would be, a new development would be in Seppic, that's on the case. It'll be on city water, Orman Beach city water and Orman Beach city sewer. So, I think that's a great thing that we're doing to help improve water quality in the area. I also wanted to comment on item H. This is the replacement of the chiller, which is the main air conditioning compressor. Most of us know that, we don't have chillers in our homes, but in big, large, commercial buildings. We're spending $127,000, or we actually already spent it, to replace the chiller, but it was only seven years old. And honestly, I'm, I'm shocked that the, the chiller only lasted seven years. And included in that $127,000 is a couple of months of rental. We had to rent the chiller because the old one failed, and we had to rent a temporary one, and that, I think, would cost about $7,000 a month, if I'm not mistaken. So, I'm just, I'm disappointed that the old one, it was out of warranty, I think the warranty was five years, but that unit only lasted seven years. And the final thing I wanted to comment on is item O. Item O is a grant, this is for the taxiway Bravo at the airport, renovation of that. It's a $69,000 expense, and we're getting 100% of the money from that, from the federal government under the CARES Act. And I just want to kudos to staff for securing that money to get that taxiway improved, at no cost to our taxpayers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kent.
Yes. Items J and K, just briefly wanted to mention that the chemical prices that we purchased for the water department have gone up tremendously, and I was, it just made me realize yet again, Orman Beach is not immune to what is happening everywhere in the world with price increases. And we hear about, you know, individuals that service your pools, the prices that they have to now pay for the chlorine, well, we're dealing with that as well, so, you know, that was, that was, to me, it was a pretty big sticker shock when I read through that, preparing for tonight's meeting. And then, item D, we are extending the, our display banner signs, we're allowing an extension for businesses to have those out and about, and it just shows that, you know, in Orman Beach, we are serious about helping small businesses and larger businesses, but in this case, most of these are small businesses, so, just those.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move to 8A. I'll open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read 8A, ordinance number 2021-19 by title.
Ordinance Number 2021-19. An Ordinance Amending Chapter 1, General Administration, Article 3, Definitions And Acronyms, Section 1-22, Definitions Of Terms And Words, Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 2, District and General Regulations, Section 2-09, REA, Rural Estate Agriculture, and Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 4, Conditional And Special Exception Regulations, Section 2-57, Criteria For Review Of Specific Conditional And Special Exception, To Provide Definitions And Specific Conditional Criteria That Would Allow An Off-Road Recreational Vehicle Course As A Special Exception Use In The REA, Rural Estate Agriculture Zoning District, Repealing All Inconsistent Ordinances Or Parts Thereof, Providing For Severability And Setting Fourth And Effective Date. This Is The First Reading Of Ordinance Number 2021-19, Read By Title Only.
Thank you, Wendy, and I'll ask our planning director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this line.
Good evening. My name is Stevens Breaker, I'm the planning director with the city. This is a land development code amendment that has three components of it. The first is to create definitions, the second is to establish a principal use within the REA zoning district, and the next is to create conditions for that use. This land development code amendment doesn't provide any specific approval for any specific parcel of land. What it does, it provides a framework- What it does, it provides a framework for future applications through the special exception process. Take the next slide. So how this application started was there was a complaint regarding the construction of a dirt track on a vacant parcel of land within that REA zoning district. Uh, code enforcement did an investigation, and there was a determination that the dirt track was not allowed as either a principal or accessory use within that zoning district. The applicant then met with staff and, and came up with a proposal to amend the land development code to allow it for his own personal use, not for commercial uses, and basically went through this planning process, which involved the planning board and city commission. Next slide, please. This is a picture of, um, the dirt bike track, the off, off-road vehicle course. Um, this was included in your packet. Next slide, please. So there are two separate distinct processes with this amendment. The first is the land development code. So the land development code amendment starts with an application. It then goes to the planning board for a recommendation which occurred on this application, and then it comes to the city commission, who has two or, two readings, who takes a formal action. If approved, the way this amendment is set up, it would then go to a special exception. So it would go to another set of public hearings that would review individual applications. Again, it's important to remember, this is a district-wide regulation, not a parcel-specific. So that would also have a planning board review and then a city commission action. If that were approved, then they would have to abide by the conditions listed in the development order. Next slide, please. So there are, again, there are three separate, um, distinct parts. The first is the definition, which defines what the vehicle course is. Um, the second is defining it as a special exception, which requires that public hearing. Originally, it was proposed as a conditional use, a staff approval and working with the applicant. We recommended it go into a special exception use. Next slide, please. These are the conditions established within the development, or again, think of a framework. Um, basically what it tries to do is to establish boundaries for this use. So it includes items such as setback for any course, maximum sound levels per our code ordinances, um, the requirement that the applicant keep the dust down, that it's only for the personal residential use of the property owner, and that outdoor lighting would not be allowed. Next slide, please. In staff's analysis, um, there was some concern as we went through this application. Uh, one was the consistency with a rural estate and agricultural zoning district. Um, as we know, these are large lots that have both agriculture and large single-family homes, and then the potential on the impact of the quality of life that could impact, um, the neighborhood. Based on those concerns, our recommendation was to go through the special exception process and review it a case-by-case basis. Um, next slide, please. This is a map of the REA zoning district. The areas highlighted in red are all the zoning districts. The hatched areas are, uh, vacant parcels. So this, this use would be allowed on a vacant parcel with or without a house and houses that are established. So that would be the limits of all the properties could apply through a special exception if this land development code amendment were approved. Next slide, please. As part of the public hearing process, we received fourteen, uh, forms of communication, emails or letters from residents within the, uh, Durance Acres areas. The ones that are highlighted in orange also provided to the commission additional correspondence. So the concerns of, of those correspondence were basically the noise impacts, that the use was not consistent with the rural state agricultural zoning district, and the impact of the quality of life. Uh, one resident said it was like a chainsaw running continuously. So those were the, the correspondence that we received so far. Next slide, please. The applicant did provide an amendment, um, to staff today, and they sought to propose additional conditions to, uh, to limit the maximum ride time of three hours within, um, the allow time, a maximum of three riders at any one time on the course, and to restrict the type of vehicles to four-stroke engines, engines less than two-hundred-and-fifty cc's. So there were some additional conditions, I think, by the applicant to try to mitigate any of the negative impacts. Next slide, please. The planning board recommended denial of the application, uh, seventy-zero. Their, their basis of denial was they thought it was not consistent or appropriate with the REA zoning district. They did not believe it was consistent with the future land use, and there was written correspondence and testimony, testimony provided at the public hearing that they did not believe it was appropriate use. There was some discussion of allowing the framework to go forward and then reviewing as a special exception. In their discussion, they basically felt like the land development code should, should be denied. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is also here for your trust of commission.
Thank you, Stevens. Any questions for Stevens at this time?
I have one, Mayor.
Could she, Littleton?
Mrs. Breaker, the decibel reading that has to be at the property line in our land development code, if you sort of know where I'm getting at, what does that have to be? Is it like sixty decibels?
Correct, for residential, it would be at the property line.
And did staff go out there and measure that at all?
We did not. It, it's not, it's not an allowed use, so, you know, the, the use should not be occurring today. Um, and, and that's one of the problems with, I think, one of the problems the planning board recognized is it places a lot of burden on code enforcement staff to, to regulate, you know, and I'm not saying this applicant would do anything to violate, but remember, this is a, a district-wide regulation, so those, those noise ordinance, the door, the dust, they would all be enforced by our code enforcement.
Any other questions? Thank you, Stevens. We may come back to you. We will start with the applicant, Grant Zimmerman.
My name's Grant Zimmerman. Uh, this is my fantastic, very first. Uh, just to give you a little background on the situation, we purchased this property in May of two thousand twenty, uh, with full and clear intentions to build a home. We're planning Ormond Beach long-term. It's where our businesses are, uh, it's where family are starting to migrate from Illinois on the island. It's kind of funny, we moved down here that everybody else wants to follow. Um, but I just want to make a couple things really, really clear. One, there's still talk that this is going to be a business. It's not. I don't want people, um, first of all, people that I don't know on the property, uh, you know, this is complete personal use, that's why we put these additional conditions in place, and things like limiting ride time. I don't, I totally understand, you know, if somebody lives out there in my neighborhood, that you don't want to hear that constantly. I get it. Uh, you know, I can't help but reference the chainsaw-like noises. I know where that's coming from. That's not us. That's a family on Timber Creek Lane. I love the family. They got three young boys who are very adamant in their racing. Uh, they ride a little hot rod eighty-five cc KTM dirt bikes that are really loud, and they train three times a week, four hours a day as a professional rider. Uh-
Thank you, and Grant, we, we may call you back up if there's any questions. Next card I have is Patricia Khan.
I think the first is the closest to us, the road is two blocks. I think the others, the ones flag and track, live in the city, the city limits, we can help each other, so let's go fix the roads and help each other. This is a thing that, you know, I've been following, I did find it, it goes straight. Straight, cut, I don't care, it's the same, you know, I'm right on the back, they have no, cut the leaves, I think it's possible, they, they fall. So the whole bit of the damage, when you put that in front of like, when somebody in there, they're both like, you know, working, they're, they're good, they're, and they're in a frame of race track, that's really, that's basically, nothing, nothing good, it's made, nothing, nothing, nothing safe, you're not, I understand, my house, it's not the contract you say, I'm like, let's just say, I'm going to do this, somebody else is on paper, and I thank you for your help.
Thank you.
I'm Renee Rittenhour, I'm a resident of the city, I'm sure the property's on the side, you know, I'm, I'm really interested, I'm really, I'm, I'm, so I think speaking back of the neighborhood, with I think, I think the best, best in the city, my home and, very, very, down, down the city, um, but I'm playing white, that's my papers, as people pulling down the driveway tonight, down the, out back here, that's my dad, I just don't support much of the good man, so, don't let me get, well, guys, make sure it's whatever, it's, it's, um, he said they thought, they thought, they thought it was a, but they, I tried, I tried, I was, I was, I would respect the constitution, not allow this to happen, I have, I thought, you know, that, our, okay, um, guidelines, a back end, I will write, six, and it lists users, special exceptions, permitted activities, on the very last page of, open activities, it specifically states, speedlights, race cars, and motorized vehicles, all, all, so as to, as, as, not allow this to happen.
John Hamlin.
I, I, John Hamlin, and I'm just, you know, because, because, I, I understand that there was, we thought that it was fair, that this was going to be something, the track, the ride, and, 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 I thought, you know, it was fair to say, and, and all of that's because, not true. All of those are unique, particular thing, asking me, is we did, yes, my motor, my motor is, is, yes, okay, white is four point five, so, the motor, you say, we can't afford your grass, the more, the more grass, twice a week, three times a week, that's any right of noise, it's, it's, the more, it's, that, 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 so, this is, it's not enough, this is a chainsaw, it's, it sounds so horrible, and it's, your worst thing ever happened. We've done, we've done so many, that, 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 you know, we do, I don't have to, and, 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 so, maybe that's just-
Thank you. And next is Victoria, is it first?
Um, just like those, I was, I was, uh, discussing, I was, I was, so, it's a lot of these, you know, change, and, 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 we appreciate, we appreciate, especially when people, like, I'm, 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 bought, bought, divorced, cutting, uh, a farm, a large farm in Iowa, I understand the nature of agriculture, how it works, and how actually it's so, and, it's one of the reasons that I wanted to put up, uh, to, to, uh, to, um, we're starting to live life, I, it was not the same thing as those who've got the, our best in the past, building our property, building our home, which we are excited to develop, and, and, actually, we had, um, starting to build, we can't reach that, and spending the rest of our lives on, in our five acres of land, that, 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 we are going to be, exactly that.
Thank you. Stevens, can I ask a couple questions before we get into motions and discussion? Um, just want to make sure I'm clear on the process. First, you would have to, which is what we're doing here tonight, talking about, amend the land development code. Then, if you actually wanted to build a track, he would have to go through another whole process, special exception process, back through the planning board, back through the public process, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a two-part, two-part process. And my next question is, right now, he or anybody who owns property out there can ride their motorbikes on that property, so long as they don't exceed the decibel level that's required, isn't that correct?
Well, I, I think one of the accusations is that all raceable man, this use, so, just riding your, your light, or, you can get part of your, your activities, that's not really what we're talking about, this use is its own separate, principal use, it creates a track, and then it's life activities.
And I get that, but if I have a piece of property that lends itself to dirt bike riding, trails, or whatever the case may be, and I want to ride my bike on it all day long, as long as I don't violate any other rules, then I can do that, is that correct? So that, that was another thing that, that I wanted to know. Um, all right, I think that's everything I had. Thank you. Anyone else have?
Excuse my, excuse my voice, I have a little laryngitis, I'll try to get this out. Um, I just, I, I think you can answer this. Are they going to build a house and want the racetrack, or is the racetrack temporary? That's what I'm not sure of.
So I, I believe in, 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 instead of turning attention into building a house, this, this land development code, the, the, would not require a house, because the off, off-road recreational course is its own personal use, so, if you imagine, you know, that map, so any property in that map, it, it comes through as a special exception, and they would have to, and, and argue why this was created, it's, so, you know, just, if it's own personal use, it's, right now, I do believe the answer is, yes.
Commissioner Littleton, okay, yes. Uh, Stevens, just to make sure, when I was looking over this, is there a limit on the amount of days per week the activity would be allowed? I didn't see one.
No, I, 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 this, I believe that's appropriate, it's something that you have to-
Commissioner, something.
Yeah, Stevens, um, the, these, uh, the conditions that the applicant has offered up, maximum ride time of three hours, you know, per day, maximum three riders at any one time on the course, uh, only four-stroke engines, and they have to be less than two-hundred-and-fifty cc's. Uh, and, and the fact that, I mean, applicant didn't offer this, but I, well, those, could, could these be incorporated into the amendment? And where did the, what was the genesis of the amendment that is brought? Because he also doesn't want to, he doesn't, he's not asking to ride ATVs or, you know, only these small four-stroke, uh, little bikes, so-
The genesis was the dirt force, the point, that then led to the process of, uh, the conditions that were included, um, were generated by the applicant, staff, the lines, the directions, the bikes, uh, driving them to, to provide grant orders for this use, so, uh, the commission believes it's appropriate to add, uses that the applicant is offering, or to add additional, so, maybe, uh, something with any, uh-
And, and did the, the, did the applicant begin with, um, making this primary use versus an accessory use to a, to his primary residence?
So you can't have the accessory use, that's, basically, you have to have a house to have the accessory use, so, you know, you can't have the accessory use, you can have personal use, and then make this accessory, and everything would have to be in the side, back, to be in the front yard, so there are certain limitations for accessory uses, so as we're going through this, it's all assumed that there is no, have to see.
Right. And that's my question. And that's my question. So this began with the applicant saying, I want to build a racetrack out there before I build my house? Or whether I ever build a house? How, how did it begin that the rate, that the, that the motocross course would be built without a house? It's, it's, it's the use, right?
The, the usage you see in that photo was double cover, so the grade was double cover. So the word is in the generalized use, we went through the land development code process.
Okay.
So it didn't, it didn't matter on whether or not you had a house or not. If you have some house, then yes, you can have, uh, you can have the ATV and a bike tracked. But it has to be in the back and it has to be in the side, in the front.
So would it be appropriate to add another condition that this could only be done as an accessory use to the applicant's homestead?
Again, this, this is the applicant's, this is another measure, so the applicant would probably wanna weigh in.
Right.
If my being, the commission has already added a condition, they can.
Right, and then, and then if we did these conditions, that would apply universally, right? In other words, what we're doing is, were these conditions would apply to everybody else in that, out in Durant Lake or.
In the REA, it still requires the, the, a few of the special exceptions. So each individual occupation is a few months on that. And then if you have any, this is approved, the special exception, you can bring framework, but not the special exception.
Any other questions?
This is Mayor. Down, down here.
Oh, right.
Um, I just wanna address Commissioner Selby's question. So this is a request by an applicant to amend the land development code. It's a legislative decision by the commission, so the commission believes that there's some additional, uh, conditions that would be appropriate, um, for purposes of amending the code. You, you can do that. I know, and the staff report has been couched as, um, you know, the applicant's, um, application. But really, it's a legislative action by the commission and it's premised on, uh, certain features, uh, that are more specifically spelled out in the staff report, the planning staff report for the planning board. Um, so it's purely your legislative decision in terms of what you wanna do. I just don't want you to believe that this is, should be treated similar to a development order because it's not.
Let me ask Stephen, if, um, so if he builds the house, then is the course allowed as an accessory use under the current code?
Rear inside.
Rear inside yard. So, and he's gotta go through another process anyway. This, if. And, but if he, if this was approved and then he had to go through the special exception process, that's another process he has to go through anyway. If he builds the house, then he comes back to us for a use that is allowed under our current land development code as an accessory use. I know it gets really complicated, but.
The accessory should be required, I said.
Okay.
If he has.
Okay.
Then he's not going to.
So it's just a matter of, in some, in some instances, being patient, um. And so the other question is, you know, if I had a whole list of exceptions, um. You know, requiring, kinda like we did with the downtown ordinance, allowing restaurants to have music, the three strikes or out rule. If you go over that decibel reading more than three times, you're done, you can't do it anymore. I think we did that with River Grill as well. Um, if I wanted to add that, if I wanted to have, uh, particular kind of screening, uh, particular kind of setbacks, um. The number of hours that could be used, who, how many can ride at a time, what size bikes, addressing all those concerns to try to balance what the current neighbors are dealing with versus what this applicant wants to do. Would it be better to put that in the LDC or put those through the special exception process or both?
The framework should be in a disney. So if you have standards that you want to apply and that was the goal of these conditions, so if you have certain conditions.
Yeah.
You put them in the framework, and then those conditions, I mean, the cases, they're going to be, they're special exceptions.
Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. If, if the motorcycle, you know, track is permitted as an accessory use, what are the conditions now that you would look at?
Grading, grading, they're not, this is, this is on vacant parcels. This, this land development code, it seems to add a risk.
Okay.
On vacant parcels.
Okay, alright, okay.
So, so.
I, I.
They're the house.
Alright, okay, so I have zero interest, I would never support, um, somebody doing that without building their house, without it, without it being on their primary residence. And for me is a, is a deal breaker there, period. They gotta live there, they gotta be a neighbor, and then this is something they're doing on their pri, on their homestead property. And they gotta deal with it, they can't just buy five acres out there and then come out and ride their bikes and then leave. Yeah, so, and by the way, I, and I should say this, I did meet with Mr. Zimmerman on the property. And we did discuss these three, uh, these three conditions. We also discussed, um, building, building the home first. And so that's kind of a question to Mr. Zimmerman, whether or not he would, the applicant would consider that, uh, an acceptable condition.
And we can, we can have him. Commissioner Kent.
Thank you, um, Mr. Speaker, I need you back here just for a moment. Just so I get my mind wrapped around this, uh, correctly, because Ms. Rittenhour spoke and I, I have great respect for the Rittenhour family, uh, during the fall time. But she spoke and was reading, you know, from our REA zoning district that no dirt bikes, tracks, things like that. But you're telling us now, if it's an accessory use, if there's a home already there, then it is allowed in the side and rear part of the property?
I believe what she referenced was the nineteen ninety-six land development code, which included prohibitive uses. Our land development code was amended in two thousand and four.
Yes, it was.
So all those prohibitive uses are no longer in the code. If it's not expressly allowed, it's not, it's prohibited, right? So there is no, there is no ability to allow the uses being sought because it's not within one of the uses in there. You are allowed accessory use and people have made courses and, and stuff like that. If the commission feels like they need to regulate it as an accessory use, we can certainly process it, you can use these.
No, because I heard you say earlier that staff can actually approve those.
Correct.
Right, right, which is why, probably in, in, in close to eighteen years, I don't recall ever having one of these come before me.
Sure.
Um, I, I also, so the commission and the, and the public knows, I met with Mr. Zimmerman today, beautiful piece of property, by the way. Um, love that, that big oak, uh, that we were parked under while we were, while we were having our discussion today. But I am a hundred percent with Commissioner Selby, that until your home is on that property and you are that neighbor, there is no way I could, I could approve this. Um, and it's, uh, it goes a long way to be that good neighbor, you know? And I think that if, if we approve this down the road, because I won't tonight, but if we approve this down the road, um, then we need to make sure that we have some, some fail safes in place. For the neighbors, to make sure they're, they're operating within the confines that, that we discussed. It weighs heavily on me, what I've heard tonight from the residents, planning board seven oh, um, it's pretty, pretty powerful. So for me, I'm excited for you guys, I'm glad that you've, you've made this your home, um, but let's get your home. And then, well, you won't have to come back to those accessory use, uh, staff will be able to take care of it from there.
So, Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Selby.
Just to jump on that, so, um, for the applicant's, uh, situation, if, if, um, if, I mean, if indeed we, I guess we have to make that a condition. Right? We gotta, we gotta do something tonight.
The plan where our mission was to deny the application, by the way.
Yeah.
To not allow dish use on vacant or improving parcels within the REA zoning.
Right.
So you're actually, if, if, so desired, we need to not have. Then the applicant would have the right to build his house, to a small track or, or just ride his dirt bikes on his property as an accessory use. But not to the extent of what's been done.
But how about, I, I really like some of these other limitations. Uh, maximum three hours of riding on any given day, I like the maximum three riders on the course at any one time. And I like four-stroke, for those of you who don't know the difference between four-stroke and two-stroke. Four strokes are quiet, well, they're significantly quieter than two strokes. Two strokes are the ones that go ring, me 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 me, you know, that really do sound like a chainsaw.
That was excellent.
That's, that's all I got, I don't.
I like that, I like that description, can you do that one more time?
Yeah, I think you'd have to pay them to get me to do it again. Um, but the two, but the two strokes are the ones that are really loud, piercing, high pitched. Four strokes are more like a rumble, I have one of those in my repertoire. Um, and so I like, and I also like limiting the, the, uh, the size of the motor, in this case, two hundred fifty cc, because they're gonna make a lot less noise, the smaller bit.
So my suggestion is, it sounds like the commission, even if you have a house, there's some concern, if as accessory use, you would want some conditions. Cause I've never had anybody come in for an off-road track on, on a ride parcel.
Well, I suspect people don't really realize that's permitted.
So if they do, we, staff could, could generate our administrative land development code amendment, separate of the applicant, and then put in conditions as an accessory use.
Okay, so, so if I'm hearing you, we should, we could vote this down, we could deny this tonight. You would come back with, with limitations on this. The applicant would proceed with building his house. And once he has his house built, then he would come in and just apply with staff under those, uh.
Accessory use standards established, established by the development. The applicant would also probably have to, um, pre-grade what, what has been done on the.
Right.
Yes, that their, their next, sounds like the next step would be the house. But then, you know, I agree, there are some good conditions, even as accessory use, um, and then we can bring back and, and.
And, and by doing that, we actually protect the residents of the REA area. Because right now, somebody could go in there and build one of these things and all they have, they have is a house. And then they have, there's no limitation, uh, they can just come down, pull a, pull a permit from you and staff, and then they can ride, I guess, whenever they want, right?
Right, I mean, they still have the noise ordinance and some of the other ordinance, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Deputy Mayor.
Without, I don't know about you all, but I'm.
Commissioner Littleton, anything?
I, I did wanna say that, uh, I met with Mr. Zimmerman and based on the fact that he was going to build the house. And, uh, the fact that the decibel reading was ne- negligible, or as I can't talk. Yes, um, I was supportive of it because he was gonna build the house and right now it's gonna, who knows how long it's gonna be till he's able to build it. Um, and so that's sort of my concern, I'm, I know that people, I'm certain people ride these, these types of bikes on the property right now, they just don't create a dirt track. Um, and I think he's gonna be a good neighbor with his five acres and, uh, I actually think he's, the neighbors are gonna love him and, and appreciate what he's doing with the community. When he brings his family in and builds a brand new house and, uh, puts up screening as he's offered to do. Um, so I was supportive of it, but looks like he's not gonna carry, so.
Commissioner Kent.
Yeah, I was just gonna, uh, question for Mr. Hayes. Commissioner Selby, you know, mentioned, um, I guess making a motion for denial. Um, and that's one way we could do this, but could we not just not have a motion or a second, or a motion that there's no second and then it dies due to lack of a second? And same, it's, it's the same outcome.
Same, same outcome, right?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
I like that idea.
Let me, um, weigh in and also mention that I met with Grant Zimmerman on Sunday, also, uh, whiskey and hazel were there. Who are a couple beautiful golden retrievers. Uh, beautiful property, I wasn't sure what to expect when I went out there, when I was gonna hear this motorbike. I guess I had a, a sound in my head, Commissioner Selby, that I couldn't, uh, produce, but it was so much quieter than I expected. And actually, us talking by the tree was more on the decibel meter. Uh, what I did after watching the decibel meter while he rode around, then I asked him to let me drive out on the road with the decibel meter while he drove around the property. And it was, never even reached the sixty decibel limit from the road, much less from somebody else's property. So that part, uh, gave me a comfort level. But I think, but if, if there's no motion and this dies for lack of, of a motion or a second tonight, I think we're almost doing you a favor. Uh, because that allows you to build that house, put in your track as an accessory use through staff. I don't even think we need to come back with a new amendment because I think you, as a good neighbor, are gonna allow staff to put whatever conditions they believe are appropriate on you. Or you can agree to them in writing. Um, honestly, the freedom to, to do what you want with your property as an American is, is a fundamental right. But that freedom also has to be balanced by other property owners, so, and that's what we struggle with, with this particular amendment. And, uh, so I really appreciate, you know, a young man who's a businessman in our community, who wants to live in Ormond Beach, wants to raise a family in Ormond Beach. And tries to do it the right way. I mean, maybe started off a little clunky, has a neighbor that complained, we get this a lot out in that particular part of the city, so don't feel bad about that. Uh, but you did go through the right process and you show that you are trying to do the right thing and follow the rules, and so that's impressive. Um, but really, in the long run, I feel like by this not passing tonight, you're gonna be in a much better position overall. And coming into tonight, I wasn't sure about that, uh, this is just a perfect example of how clunky and over-regulated government can be, how complex. But there's reasons for that too, so you can't be totally critical of the process. It's a, it's an attempt to, uh, balance out all the interests. And so, you know, when you build your principal structure, that track is allowed as an accessory use. Just like if you wanted to put in a pool, I believe a pool would be allowed as an accessory use. You could put that pool in, crank the music up to fif, uh, fifty-nine decibels, have parties there from six AM till midnight every day. And never have a problem, um, as long as you're following those rules and complying with the, with the sound ordinances. And so similarly, this is an allowed thing, so, uh, it may feel like you're not being successful, but I would argue that ultimately you're gonna come out better in the long run. So it's just a, it's a long way to get there. Anything else from the mayor?
Mayor, if I could just.
Commissioner Selby.
Um, I wanna make sure that staff comes back to us with these additional restrictions, additional limitations, and they come back as quickly as possible. Uh, and also I want for the homeowners who live in that area, I want you to understand that right now there, there basically are very little limitations. Somebody can go, and somebody who has a home out there, right, because it's accessory use, could build the track like this and could operate with, almost without limitation. Because basically the limitations are, what did you say, it was, uh, drainage, um, they were more.
Grade fill and noise.
Grade fill and noise, okay, so noise is probably the one thing that you're most concerned with, but, uh, grading, filling and noise, those are really the only limitations right now. So that's probably new information to a lot of you who live out there, you probably didn't know that, that it is permitted. And it can be done and staff doesn't even have to come for a public hearing if you have a home out there, okay? So just wanna, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna tighten that up to where it'll be, if somebody does it, they'll be restricted on the hours of operation. They'll be restricted on the size of the, the cycles, they'll be restricted on, uh, uh, the number of riders riding at any one time. Um, and, uh, and the, I guess I said the size of the, the cycles and the cc size. Anyway, I think it's, I think we're moving in the right direction to do exactly what the mayor said, which is, um, protect your neighbor rights, your rights as a neighbor.
Deputy Mayor.
I can get this out, I just wanna compliment Grant and your whole group sitting there for being so polite and you all look such, look like such a nice group, so I just wanna compliment you and wish. So I just wanna compliment you and wish you the best, and I'm so glad you're in Ormond Beach.
Anyone else? We're on eight A, is there a motion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. City Attorney, I'll deem that the, uh, item fails for lack of a motion, and we'll move to eight B, as long as you're okay with that, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good, thank you, eight B.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty, an ordinance amending chapter one, general administration, article three, definitions and acronyms, section one dash twenty-two, definitions of terms and words in chapter two, district and general regulations, article three, general regulations, section two dash fifty, accessory uses of the land development code to add definitions and accessory use standards to allow mobile food dispensing vehicles, food trucks, under certain conditions and within certain zoning districts, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty, read by title only.
Planning Director Stevens Breaker on food trucks.
Good evening again, this is a land development code amendment. There are two sections of the land development code that are secret from the mayor. One is a definition, and one is accessory uses. Our current regulations for food trucks are generally not contained in the land development code, they've been done by policy. We allow them for large-scale civic events, large-scale nonprofit events, such as Prince Peace. Within the, in a local service boundary agreement where we annex property, and we did do a land development code to allow, within the multi-bed res producer use within I-1 zoning districts. There was, um, state law that changed that basically said three things. One is jurisdictions couldn't, um, do the licensing and permitting of food trucks. It also said that cities could not prohibit the food trucks outright in their city. And then the third thing is that you could establish operations weekends. So the land development code amendment before you seeks to recognize the three uses, the city-sponsored events on the city property, the house of worship special events, and the interlocal service boundary agreement. And then add both the B-8, which is the general or residential district, and the I-1 zoning district. Food trucks would, uh, they would not be permitted on vacant land, and the property where they are proposed would have to have a principal use demonstrated through a business tax receipt. So within the land development code, as we report, there are some standards that we have taken from other jurisdictions and internal discussions. We feel that they, uh, provide parameters, again, the framework for the use of food trucks. The planning board did review and recommend approval of this amendment. Staff was also recommending approval. There was a discussion when we went to the planning board about allowing the residential community centers, such as the trails. We are working on an amendment, present it back to the planning board in August. It was well-received by the planning board, so that should be coming back to us.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, uh, Stephen, um, I guess it was a couple of years ago after we had undergone some pretty significant construction at my office building on East Granada, where we have multiple tenants. We engaged a food truck to come to the business, you know, they parked behind the building, well, in the parking lot, which is, you know, south of the building. And, um, we then, you know, hosted lunch for any of the tenants who wanted to, were taking that. I'm not asking you if we broke the law back then, but would that be under, if this passes, would that be permissible today?
It's not allowed in the downtown, except on city property, on, on city events. So the Celtic festival, Fortis alive, it's not allowed on private property. Chances are that, you know, nobody called for enforcement, and nobody here called to complain. That would be the, the action. We were aware that people that use food trucks for catering, you know, generally by the time someone figures that out, they go on and, and violation to, so.
Yeah, so that was gonna be my next question. So if somebody was at a big birthday party for a hundred kids, and they, and they, you know, engaged a food truck to come to their house to provide food, you know, for the guests, that's not permitted either, is it?
Not allowed in residential areas. So, I mean, I, I understand the, the questions we had, some of the discussion of the planning board. And again, this, this amendment's not gonna fix everything.
Right, okay.
Generally, residential areas, it's, it's not.
And I have, I have one other question. Uh, when I was growing up, there was a thing called the good humor truck. These were ice cream vendors, you know, came around your neighborhood, rang these bells, and, you know, for fifty cents or a buck, or whatever, it's probably a lot cheaper than that, but, um, you'd buy ice cream. Is that considered a food truck?
No, there, there's separate provisions in our code boards that allow it under certain circumstances.
And, and what do, what do we call that? I mean, if it's not.
I believe it's a solicitor license, uh, but it, it's separate.
Okay, so that is permitted, there is a way to get that?
Under the laws.
Okay, alright. And that wasn't regu- that isn't what was regulated by the state in this new state law?
Everything's regulated by the state now. I mean, the, the, the food truck generally are, are things that have cooking, lots of propane, and this type of.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Anyone else? I do not have any cards on eight B.
I have approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Eight C.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter two, district and general regulations, article three, general regulations, section two dash five zero, accessory uses of the land development code to amend the conditions for nonprofit-related car and motorcycle washes, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, we'll go to Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
This land development code amendment is focused on section two dash fifty, which is our accessory uses. And the issue is regarding nonprofit-related car washes and motorcycle washes. Our land development code has two very distinct ways of regulating outdoor activities. The first is that as an accessory. So our land development code allows commercial uses of retail to have outdoor sales of what they sell inside four times a day, or ten days. So that's staff approval. It also has broad allowances for nonprofits in commercial and industrial zones. So if you're a nonprofit, you can do almost any event to support your nonprofit. The second part is probably more familiar with the special exception, uh, item revendings such as group sales, custom FX lighting, outdoor music, and outdoor sales. So there's two separate processes. So we're really focusing on the nonprofits and the accessory users. One of the concerns that were presented by staff during special events were the motorcycle washes. And the concerns included the duration of the motorcycle washes, the location on the site, workers advertising the event in the right way, distractions the motorists, and traffic safety. So those were the concerns, um, that were identified, that they were in agreement with the planning board. In our staff report, we presented three options to the planning board. One was to do nothing, that these events have occurred, um, since at least two thousand sixteen. The second was to try to put parameters or limit duration of the events, including, uh, potentially establish setbacks. And the third was to prohibit, uh, car and motorcycle washes in entirety. The land development code already has within the north US and core door that you can't do motorcycle washes. So that would basically extend that, that provision. The planning board, um, had, had a good discussion, they recommended approval five to two, of kind of an amendment of option one and two. They allow the events during the recognized special events, bike week, bike overfest, and then an additional ten days. So they reined in, they, they limited the number of times people could have car washes on their commercial or industrial properties. And they also eliminated the distance requirements of the original amendment. Their goal was just to keep the individuals on private property, and basically, their position was very important to keep them, take action if they are in the right way or causing traffic safety issues. I don't wanna answer questions.
Any questions for Stephen?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, the first question I have is, I, I mean, I understand why we're addressing motorcycle washes. Why, why is cars in, you know, this? I don't, I don't, they're in bike week, I don't see car washes.
No, it's all, it's all the same regulation, same, you know, the same type of.
So, I mean, is this, when I, when you, when I think of a car wash, I think of like the, the Seabreeze High School band doing a car wash on a Saturday. Do they have to go through this whole same process?
They have to get a nonprofit permit, yes. Doesn't cost anything, so it's basically just a, a registration of, of the use.
And then, and, um, you know, I, I've, I've never taken, I don't have a motorcycle now, but when I did, I never took my motorcycle to one of these washes. But just driving around for the last thirty-five years, I have ne- it has never been apparent to me that any of the bike washes anywhere, even in Ormond Beach, but anywhere, were associated with a not-for-profit organization. Out of these girls in bikinis, what, what, what not-for-profit did they work for?
Every, every, every event that you see in Ormond Beach was, was pulled by a nonprofit. They made contract with workers to, to assist their bike event. And I'm not sure if any property owners or business owners are here tonight, they were at the planning board, so they could probably speak to it. I know the business owners have stated to staff that these events raise awareness of their business and increase their restaurant business. So they are basically workers associated with the nonprofits.
Alright, thank you.
Commissioner Kent.
So on North US Highway one, these are not allowed?
At all.
At all?
Period.
But up on A one A, and other places where we, where, where we see this take place, um, we're referring to those areas now.
Correct, so the, in two thousand fifteen, we established the interlocal service boundary agreement. And one of the actions of that agreement was to specifically prohibit these car washes.
Right.
Which is why we are here bringing this amendment forward to determine what the, what the conditions are.
But if, if Ormond Beach could even say that we have a biker hub, which we do, we do. And, um, you know, I, I, uh, I'll just say, I, I, I love the Iron Horse at certain times of the year. My kid loves it, my wife loves it, we go out there and get steak tips. And there are other places that, that we go as well. But i- it's just very telling to me that we don't allow this in the biker hub of Ormond Beach. But, um, we're talking about it in other places. I don't agree with the planning board's recommendation. I'm for option three, which is no-go. I, I, I don't ever drive by these and think, that was wholesome. Took the drive-by and, and see in Ormond Beach. I just, I don't, you know? It's, it's something that to me, it's not, it's not what our residents expect. Not trying to be goody-two-shoes, nothing like that. But I've said it before, you can feel it when you leave the city limits of Ormond Beach. Your car can tell the difference, its tires can tell the difference on the different roads of our sister cities and counties. No offense to them, but we take better care, more pride, if you wanna call it. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm not for the recommendation, uh, I'm, I'm for option three, Commissioner.
Deputy Mayor Persis.
My concern is just, um, the safety issue of, on, on US one, I mean, on A one A. I mean, that's, that's con- that's congested, and to have people out doing that right on the sidewalks, I'm definitely not in favor of that. Don't think it's a great, a good idea.
I'm fine with the, uh, planning board's, uh, recommendations.
So if we do nothing, nothing changes?
Correct, we staff with, um, in, outside the interlocal service boundary agreement, the car wash is as we have done since at least two thousand sixteen.
What criteria do you use to, to control those? Like, I can't say a bikini wash, you know, what I see in Holly Hill or Daytona, and occasionally in Ormond, is something that I want my children, uh, seeing anytime during the year in our city. But yet, a school car wash doesn't bother me, so how do we, how do we get that balanced?
The, the original proposal had a fifty-foot setback from A one A, so basically, your car wash has, has been an interior or rear of the property. So that is one option. Now, the, the city attorney talked about the clothing and, and first amendment issues, but, you know, I'm not aware that we can regulate the clothing.
Yeah, I know you're joking.
You don't wanna get into the dress code.
All, all eyes down here, right? No, the planning director is, is absolutely correct. You know, you cannot regulate aesthetic, uh, clothing, uh, clo- clothing, uh, because it, um, you know, creates, um, potential first amendment issues. I think the, um, you know, the, the challenge is trying to find a balance, right? You either allow it or you don't allow it. That's pretty straightforward. And, um, for a minute, I'll go back to the North US one, interlocal agreement that we did with the county. They're not allowed there for a reason, you know, we're trying to clean up, uh, what the county had allowed. So that's what you wanna do, that's easy to enforce, it doesn't discriminate one way or the other. The challenge will be, if you want to allow it and impose conditions, finding the proper conditions. So I think, uh, setbacks, um, certainly one way to do that, the planning board took some issue with that. Public safety is another issue, of, of course, um, hours of operation. You know, those, those sorts of time, place, manner restrictions, I think those are appropriate, and those are enforceable. I would encourage you to stay away from the, uh, discussion of the, um, the visual effects of clothing and those sorts of things. I mean, everybody knows what they are. But i- in the final analysis, it's whether you want it or not, um, whether you wanna attach some conditions, whether you want to, for instance, allow it by a nonprofit, and as a condition say, okay, if you're a nonprofit, you, the nonprofit has, you actually have to physically do the event, you can't con- contract it out, you can't use volunteers, you can't, you know, you can't, um, you know, use employees from another entity, if, if you will. So there's other ways to maybe, um, address those types of issues. I think what the planning director's presented to you is probably his, his best first effort. And to be honest with you, short of just not allowing it, it's gonna be difficult to regulate.
So really, option three is likely the best choice. Is there a motion for option three?
There is, I make a motion for option three.
Second.
Any other discussion? Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we will move to eight D.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter three, performance standards, article six, architectural design standards, section three dash seventy, special structure provisions of the land development code to amend the requirements for motor vehicle service station canopies, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. Planning Director Stevens Breaker, once again, we're working you hard tonight, Stephen, and you're not done.
Hope it'll be easier than it was. Um, this land development code amendment is to section three dash seventy, which is, um, architectural standards, special structure provisions specifically for gas stations. There was a, a house built, um, a couple of years ago, that basically said, uh, local governments, uh, can only do certain things with gas canopies. Basically, you can't prevent the use of corporate trademarks or go signage. So what this seeks to do is to align our code with that, and basically, it will allow signage on the gas station canopies. Previously, we've allowed them, like at Smokey, Wawa, for, for land development, they come through and they ask for it. So based on state statutes, this would be allowed, um, for staff approval, indicating that the consistency of the gas canopy and the store structure must be the same. Planning board, uh, recommended approval of this amendment, set in zero, and staff also.
Thank you, Stephen. I don't have any cards on eight D.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, so we'll close the public hearings, move to nine A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Ormond Gateway subdivision, a commercial three-lot subdivision, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, read by title only. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, read by title only.
Thank you. Stevens?
This application is a final plat for the Ormond Gateway subdivision. If you recall, in February, this was done as a preliminary plat. This is US One located along the stretch here. The railroad is on the other side, and then destination gate on the drive is located here, as a traffic signal. So the, the goal is to develop the site into commercial uses. Right now, there's three commercial parcels in the abandoned highway. The plat seeks to make three commercial parcels, uh, three blocks, and then it preserves a retention area. It exceeds the, uh, tree preservation area, including the historic tree preservation. The applicant is elected to post a report on and report the plat. As part of that, the second layer U committee, as we did at the city attorney's office, and an independent city surveyor, said the plat is ready to report it. They reported the plat, and then they were going to give the preference post-up position. Staff has recommended approval.
Any questions for Stevens? Any questions for the applicant? Just need a motion and a second.
I'm moving.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sully.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Ten A.
Florida League of Cities Voting Delegate. We're requesting that you appoint a voting delegate for the annual conference, which will be held in Orlando in August.
Mayor, are you intent to attend?
I will, and I'm happy to do it, or I'm happy to let anyone else do it.
I will. I would like to nominate you.
I second it. I third it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and then... Is that good enough for you, Wendy?
Yes.
You didn't need a roll call on that, did you? Okay. Uh, now we go to reports, suggestions, and requests. And we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
I don't know if you want to be the last one there, or?
Sure. Then we'll start with City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank Stevens. Whoa. My brain exploded with how much knowledge you can lay down on us, man. You, you, I'm so happy you had that department. Uh, great job tonight. You're intelligent, brilliant, and you're the perfect fit for it. Uh, I guess the only other pressing issue would be in regards to the church. Um, it's true, I did tell someone that if they, what I said was, if someone came up, uh, raising funds in order to purchase the property, I would sell the property. And, uh, truly, that time was really to be presented was last week. I mean, I don't feel like being coerced, you know, sort of coerced into a last-minute deal. I hate when that's done. And, uh, every time it happens, I hate when it's done. So at this moment, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Littleton. And Commissioner Sully.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, relative to the, uh, fifty-six North Beach, I have a question for the city attorney. Um, how, how the offer that, uh, Dr. Deefendorfer has made, I, I don't, I don't know that I've seen it. I don't know if it was emailed to us or not, or if it was done. Okay, well, I just, I, I, I didn't have the opportunity to see it. Um, but what would be the process for evaluating that? And I ask that in light of the email that I think we got today from you, Shannon, regarding the timetable that we're on for the, uh, proposals, or for the demolition. So I'm, I'm assuming that Dr. Deefendorfer does not want to buy the land without the building?
So we, we talked, um, a little bit about the process at the last meeting, right? Um, this property is in, um, the community redevelopment district area. Um, consequently, um, there's a statute, it's, I believe it's section one sixty-three point three eighty, that governs the disposition of property in the CRA. So we can't just accept an offer and sell it. We can't negotiate with them. You basically have to issue, uh, an RP or solicit proposals from any interested party, uh, that may be willing to, um, whatever the commission wants to do, sell it, um, lease it, redevelop it. You have to issue an RFP for that purpose. And then there are certain criteria within the statute, um, within which the commission is required to evaluate those proposals and then make a determination, um, essentially what's in the best interest of the general public, um, based on that criteria. So that's kind of the statutory process. Now, in order to make that happen, um, remember, we've got a, a contract, um, with, um, I believe it's mis- with, uh, A.M. Weigel, um, and that's, that's an ongoing contract. So, um, my understanding from the last meeting is that, is that Mr. Weigel was receptive to working with the commission. So the first thing that would have to happen would be, um, a, a mutual, by mutual consent, to put a pause on any further performance under the, under the contract. Um, then staff would need to receive from this commission specific direction in terms of a scope, um, from which to develop an RFP. And then they'd have to bring that back to the commission. Um, and then we would need to know, you know, what you wanted to go into, what, what, what do you want to do with the property? Want to sell it? Want to sell both, both sides of the road? You want to, you know, kind of split it out? Um, is it going to be conditioned on developing it consistent with the uses in the CRA master plan, those sorts of things? So there's a lot of detail that would have to be worked through, uh, and work for staff to do that. Uh, the timeline in the statute for issuing, uh, an RP and, and, uh, soliciting proposals, I think it's, you know, something like thirty, sixty, ninety days. I think at a minimum, a minimum, you're probably going to be looking at about a hundred and twenty-day timeframe, if I remember correctly. So assuming all of that occurred, and then, and the contracts will unpause, um, to allow the commission to evaluate those proposals, um, assuming that the commission decided to accept the proposal, at some point, the commission would then, with the, again, the mutual consent of the contractor, would have to terminate that contract. So there are so- there, there are some, um, several steps to kind of work through if the commission desires to go down that route. But essentially, um, you know, you can't just accept a proposal off the street. You've got to comply with the requirements under statute.
So, um, so I guess, I guess I'm gonna, Mayor, if this is appropriate, I, I want to make sure it's appropriate. I, I'm just curious if there's, um, anybody, uh, on the, well, if there are three, if there are at least three of us on the city commission would like to go through this process in light of the fact, like, I don't, is it appropriate for me to ask what the, what the price that Dr. offered?
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand, okay. Okay, well, I just have, I have...
Standard commercial contract, um, from Thomas Cafrey, through Realtor Proz, I guess they're commercial.
Right.
Three hundred thousand with a fifty thousand earnest money deposit held by Southern Title.
So I guess, you know, this would, I mean, you could call, Mayor, you could call another special meeting. We could, you know, we could put all this on the agenda, but if, but I, I think what I'd rather do first is find out whether or not there are three of, of our five who would be interested in pursuing that, that path. I, I'm one. I would, I would be interested in that.
Yep, and I think, I mean, this is the only opportunity we have to discuss these items. Obviously, I was for a pause previously. I continue to be for a pause, but I don't get the sense from the rest of the commission that anyone else.
I know, I'm sort of hearing from you, so I, I would agree with you.
Yep. And, uh, I mean, it's wonderful that Dr. Deefendorfer was willing, uh, to do that, even though we couldn't accept it if we wanted to. Under the, under the rules, I don't really see what the problem with a, with a pause would be. But, uh, you know, on the other hand, we have three respectable members of our commission who have made a decision, and they've been firm in that. And so at some point, we have to move forward. Um, you know, somebody mentioned earlier campaign contributions. As I recall, Commissioner Persis didn't have a campaign last time around. And I probably had campaign contributions from the same people that the people who voted to demolish had campaign contributions had. So that, to me, is really not a factor. I mean, it's certainly something that can be discussed and brought up and weighed, but I don't really see that as, as being, um, a factor. I did say, you know, not listening to the public can be dangerous, and, uh, we all do dangerous things every day. We, you know, we choose to do, uh, what we choose to do, and, and maybe it won't turn out to be dangerous in the long run, so, and that's fine, too. Uh, there may have been some hyperbole or just some, uh, trying to make sure we had a full and fair hearing, trying to make sure if you were gonna change your mind, there was, that was the time to do it. And, uh, it doesn't appear anybody was willing to do it. I still believe it was a great strategic purchase, Commissioner Sully, and thank you for bringing it to us, a waterfront property. They're not making, uh, any more of it, except maybe over in Saudi Arabia, and that's not working from what I understand. But, and it does bother me, you know, it's really ironic that the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation cites this as one of their top eleven to save. And they say, they do that every year. It's not like they had ten, and then Ormond Beach came in at the last minute with this one they wanted to save. So they made it eleven. They do, for some reason, they do eleven every year, I guess. Yeah, that's, that's up to them, but... And then literally, we're paving, uh, Paradise and putting up a parking lot. And that's, that bothers me, too. Uh, just the optics of that are horrible. I did hear at the last meeting, the special meeting, that other commissioners weren't really interested in a parking lot. So it seemed like there may be three votes to do something other than put a parking lot there. That's really the only thing I see going forward that might be a possibility, and I don't know that we have to deal with that tonight unless we're, you know, starting a negotiation with A.M. Weigel that's different than the contract they have. But I think it's going to take them several weeks to haul the debris away, is my understanding. Okay, so, and I'm sorry to intrude on your time, Commissioner Sully, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, Nightmare. Um, yeah, I, um, well, I just, I just, you know, I hate to keep, this is really, it's, uh, kind of a dead horse, but I, so I hate, I hate to keep beating on it, but I just want to mention that we did have, um, at least one offer, one proposal, um, wasn't very detailed, from Salty Church, that was forwarded to you all. And they offered to lease the building, and they would pay for all the repairs. So I just want that on the record, that there was a, a proposal, and that was subject to inspections, which of course, I think anybody who was interested would want to know the condition that they're getting into before they obligate themselves or something like that. So there was at least one, one proposal that would cost the city nothing and would, and would allow the city to continue to own the land and the building, you know, and, uh, who wouldn't have to sell it? Uh, and there were a couple of comments tonight after the pass that the, the, it doesn't have a use. Well, that's the whole, that they're, you know, the city bought it without a use, and we don't have a use now. The whole purpose of the pause was to give the public an opportunity to come up with a use that was, that, that needed to be acceptable to this. And, uh, so I just, you know, I just wanted to say that. I do want to talk about the, the, the thing that, that you brought up, Mayor, which is that, um, uh, and I have said this once before, that, uh, I was, uh, you know, I was, I don't know if I was emotionally whatever, uh, caught up in the, in the vote on the night when we voted to demol- to, uh, issue the demolition contract, um, that I really wasn't paying attention. I, I, and so I didn't pay attention to the fact that not only were we demolishing the building, but we're building a shell parking lot. We're paying for a shell parking lot. And if I'm not mistaken, we're tearing up the asphalt that's there. So the parking lot that is there, we're gonna tear all that up. Is that, is that correct, Commissioner Shanahan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're demolishing the asphalt parking lot that is there and the buildings, and we're gonna then make a shell parking lot. And I just, I'm just, I, I have a real problem with that, and I hope that, you know, some of you will agree with me on that. And here's what I would propose in the alternative. I would propose that we don't tear up the asphalt parking lot. And then, what I'm speaking of is the parking lot on the north side of the building that runs from Beach Street West along Lincoln, okay? That that not be demolished, and that the grass be planted where the building is. Because I drive by there all the time, daily, multiple times a day, and, um, prior to when the construction fence went up, there's, nobody ever parks there. Never. Nobody ever parks there, ever. There's one red truck who I think belongs to somebody who lives just, you know, one door away. He parks there occasionally. But other than that, nobody. Nobody from downtown, none of the valet parkers, nobody. Nobody at nighttime, not during the day, ever. Nobody ever parks there. So in my mind, it causes me to question, well, is there really a parking need or not? And, but more importantly, there's probably twenty or thirty parking spaces that could be striped, that the existing asphalt could be seal-coated and striped. It would save the city money, and it would look nice, and we wouldn't have a shell temporary parking lot. And we'd plant some grass where the buildings came down, which I think would look nicer than a shell parking lot. So I'm proposing that, uh, and obviously it would take a couple of us to agree with that proposal, uh, or something like that, in order to, and then we have to go through the process that Randy laid out, that we have to modify the contract. Weigel would have to agree to that, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But I think we know that Weigel Construction, uh, will, will work with us regardless. It's not a big contract. They do a lot of work for us. And, you know, they, like the city of Ormond Beach, they've already indicated that they would be one. So modifying the contract is, I, I think it, it would be simple. It is really just a question of what are, what are desires of this commission.
Fair enough. And I'll let Commissioner Kent and Deputy Mayor Persis address that in their closing remarks, and then we'll pick up Commissioner Littleton's. We're a little out of order as far as getting to everybody. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Kent. Okay, uh, Stevens Braker, I'm gonna start with you. Uh, you have incredible knowledge about Orlando Land Development Code, and it's very much appreciated by, I know many people would, especially, I'm just talking from me personally, from me. Uh, you're very sharp, very smart, and, uh, uh, you're an excellent planning director. Very good at what you do. Very, very good at what you do. I, I was one that said, as far as, uh, uh, fifty-six North Beach goes, I was one of the ones that said, I don't want a long-term, uh, parking lot. And I'll, I'll go ahead and be a little more specific, but the entire parcel I don't want, long-term parking lot. There may be a section in the back, um, that we decide as a group, but, uh, we do want to have X number of parking spots available since, um, in that downtown master plan, one of the main things that were needed is parking. I, I'm okay with, uh, temporary parking. I'm, I'm fine with that. If we decide to sell the property, I'll go ahead and put this out there as well, I'm not interested in piecemeal-ing this. I'm interested, if we're going to sell this property, I'm interested in making money for the residents of Ormond Beach. You may think that's a bad thing. I, I don't. We can agree to disagree on that. But we spent seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars on it. And at the eleventh hour, we had, um, a contract come before us, our meeting starts at seven, I think this came at five something PM, which I didn't read until I was up here on the dais. Uh, but it was like, okay, you know, we're gonna, we'll, we'll give you three hundred thousand dollars for the western side of the property. That leaves us losing four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. And, and I'll just put it out there, anybody that's interested in buying this property, it's gonna be more like a tune of like one million twenty-nine thousand dollars. Let the, let the residents of Ormond Beach make some money on this deal if we're, if we're going to sell it. I don't know. I'm just one of your, uh, five elected leaders in this community. Um, but I'm not interested in that piecemeal, piecemeal sale. Because what happens is, and I think it would generate a ton of interest on the west side if that was for sale. Uh, and of, you know, of course, you know, the city's not gonna do anything with the eastern portion of it. So whoever gets it gets the benefit of that beautiful view without paying for it. And who's left to pay for it? You and me.
And who's left to pay for it? You and me, the taxpayers of Ormond Beach. And that just doesn't, that just doesn't sit well with me. Um, so I, I hope I've, I've addressed that and answered that for the last time in the foreseeable future. Um, and then I just wanted to address, um, Common Ground. Thank, thank you for, for trying to find that common ground in our community. I gotta tell ya, um, you know, I, I was gonna say something a couple of meetings ago, and I didn't. And I was gonna say something tonight. I was telling myself, maybe just don't. But I'm disappointed, and I'll tell you why I'm disappointed with Common Ground, is that the two leaders of Common Ground really came forward the past couple of meetings, and there was nothing common about where you stood on the issue. You had a decision made in your head, 'cause you shared it here, about what we, about what we should've done. And for me, that lost all synergy, for me. And it was the opposite of common. And I hope in the future, when other issues come up, that it's not presented that way. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I'll let the mayor run the meeting, but this is not a time for you and me to have dialogue. These are closing comments by the-
Linda, please, let's not have the meeting in this way. Thank you.
These are closing comments by elected officials, and you've put us in these seats. And to me, personally, to me, there was nothing common when the people who are running the Common Ground have stated where they stand on the issue. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that's how I feel about it. So I'm hoping in the future that, that doesn't happen, 'cause I think there could be a lot of great synergy and great, uh, ideas that come out of that group. Have a good night.
Deputy Mayor Persis?
Thank you. I'll try to speak as clearly as I can. Um, first of all, um, my first thing I wanted to say was last week, Commissioner Kent and I had the privilege of going to a swearing-in for two new Ormond Beach police officers. And I just wanna, um, I guess the chief is not in here right now. Oh, there he is? Oh, there he is. There he is. He just, Chief, you do a fabulous job swearing in your new officers, and the message that you send to them on their way is, you know, so meaningful and touching. I just wanna tell you, we were all, you know, Commissioner Kent and even Ms. Shanahan and I, we were all just commenting what a great job you did, so I just wanna compliment you on that. It was just really amazing. You know, we all love going to those. It's just heartwarming, so thank you for that. And then as far as fifty-six North Beach Street, I was one also that made the comment that I didn't wanna see, you know, any permanent parking lot. Um, definitely not, and I, and I would like to see it sold at a profit, too, for our citizens. I don't wanna see it piecemealed either. I think it needs to be one, one, one piece to, to go. And I think we do need to make, make money for our citizens. And I think, I think partly that might've been why Commissioner Selby brought it to us. I mean, it was a great, it was a great deal. We got a fabulous deal on it. So I hope it will benefit every single resident in Ormond Beach, um, and I do think it will one day. And, uh, with that, I'll say goodnight. Thank you all for being here.
And Commissioner Littleton, just to pick up on, uh-
Thank you, Mayor. I, Commissioner Selby, I think you were bas- basically referencing option two when the whole thing came before us, right? And, um, th- this is the picture I had in there, 'cause I, I must be the only one that occasionally parks there. Um, if I got the thirty-one white truck, it's white truck, yeah. If, if it was the grass there, I could just give in my head the cars being parked there. If it's raining, people get out, they'll get their clothes muddy and wet, and there could be drainage issues and, and that type of thing. And con- considering how long it takes government to work and how we fund in the timetable it takes to build the, whatever we build there, um, I sort of preferred the shell parking lot temporarily. That was my thought process behind it. But, uh, certainly not gonna stay a, a shell parking lot. I mean, if we wanted it to be a parking lot, we would've made it asphalt, you know? Uh, so if, if my concerns are, you know, I'm thinking too much about it, I'm fine with revisiting it at the appropriate time.
Thank you. And, um, I, I'm one that thinks a little differently. Um, I wouldn't sell the property. Because to me, the value of that beautiful view, for our residents, Ormond Beach residents, it's priceless. It's not worth any amount of money. Even if we could double our money and make one point five million dollars, uh, the whole point of the strategic purchase was to use that property for the city of Ormond Beach. And so I'm hopeful, particularly with the interest that's been generated, that we can salvage that. And, uh, certainly, nobody wants it to be a parking lot for very long. I don't know that we were that far off with a community center idea.
We were not.
And if you could capture some of the elements of the, the church that's there now in a new community center, fix a couple of things that those, uh, young engineers out of Orlando did, did so wrong, I guess you would say. Uh, you know, put the, the ballrooms and the meeting rooms where they needed to be, and put the city offices back to the west side where they needed to be. I think we could move forward with something like that. But it's something we're gonna have to workshop and, uh, get more community input on, and then, uh, make a final decision. So I hope the interest in that property stays alive, and we can, uh, come up with a win-win. 'Cause I do appreciate the passion of everybody that's involved. I sense that. As mayor, I have to hear all sides. And I thought it was important to allow the discussion to go on, which we did. Love it or hate it, we, we had it out, and this is where we're at. And so I'm hopeful we can move forward in a positive way and, uh, still salvage a community center out of that property that all our residents can, can love and enjoy for, for years to come. So, uh, with that, we'll go to City Manager Joyce Shanahan, and then I'm gonna gavel us out of here.
Inch from a clean getaway. Um, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the gas tax, um, for, uh, approving that, uh, resolution or agreement. Um, the city attorney has spoken with the county attorney on that matter, and it's not necessarily necessary to pass that agreement, but we do have concerns that should, um, state law change or something change in the county, we wouldn't wanna jeopardize ourself in not having a signed agreement, 'cause we are the only city that didn't sign that agreement. So I think staff is recommending that we bring that back to you for final approval so that we can, um, kinda have the belts and suspenders approach to, um, that issue. Randy, I don't know if you wanna explain that.
I, I just agree with, with what, uh, the city manager just explained to you. Um, you know, and the risk factor, and Joyce and I went back and forth with this, is that, uh, the county has a, a policy that even though you don't sign it, you will still receive the proceeds, um, as an eligible participant under the statute. But the way the legislature treats municipalities this, these days, that can change in a blink of an eye. So if you're not, uh, a party to the agreement, do you have necessarily some risk going forward? Um, maybe, maybe not. It's hard, it's hard to know. But I think a conservative approach would be approve the agreement, don't like the formula, but, you know, that way you can ensure that you're gonna get something from it if state law changes or the policy of the county changes. So, thank you.
And my response to that would be bring it back to us, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you. Um, we've got a couple of workshops stacking up right now. We've got the Master Plan Workshop, which is in August. Staff has spoken with HDR, um, regarding the transportation workshop, and th- they should be getting us a draft report anytime soon, so probably, uh, looking at early September for that workshop. Um, I would also like to suggest to you that based on, uh, Senate Bill sixty-four, which is the requirement to have zero discharge to the rivers, that, um, staff would like to bring to you, and I, it's probably gonna be October, November, a, a workshop on reuse water and get some direction from you about, about that, and a plan, because we have to have a plan that goes to whomever, we don't even know what the format of the plan is right now, to, um, probably FDEP about how we're gonna do that. They're gonna give us, I, I, right now, we think is just that you have a plan, and you don't have to have it implemented until, I think, twenty thirty-two. But we need to workshop that with you and get your ideas and directions so we can come forward with that. So I see shaking of heads, so I will take that as a consensus to move forward with that. Um, uh, it's also really exciting news that we learned that, um, the Friends of the Performing Arts Center, um, were awarded a, a racing and recreation, uh, district grant for a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That was about half of what they asked for, and they were encouraged to come back. I think November is when they do the second round of that, and so, uh, we'll make sure that we do that. Um, as you've heard earlier tonight, the McDonald House has the east, west, west and south sides completed. We're gonna be, uh, coming back to you for the porch and the, the front facade, which will wrap that up. I'm pleased to say that right now, we're on track with budget, so, um, we're happy about that. And that was a real commitment from this commission. That was a decision that's lingered for a long time. You took the bull by the horns, and you, you made, uh, forward progress with that. And likewise, I really want to, um, say what an extraordinary thing that the commission did tonight by setting your tentative millage at the current rate. Part of that, um, millage calculation, when we presented it to you in the workshop, was, um, standing up or creating a public safety capital fund. I don't know of any other community in the state that's dedicating funds specifically for capital, for public safety. That's vehicles and equipment. And, um, your, your amazing and continued support of the men and women of our police and fire departments is extraordinary. It's an example to this community and to others about what we feel and how we feel about what our police and firefighters do in this community. So I think you should all be very proud of that effort. Um, that was a specific directive of your strategic plan, was to find a long-term solution to that. And, um, as we go through the budget process and that's finally approved, um, I think that that will be indeed a long-term solution that you can look back on ten years from now, and it's still funding itself. And that's the best kind of solution that we could have. So I thank you for your willingness to entertain those ideas and for your bravery in, in doing so. So thank you very much, and that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the city manager? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.